Biggest part of building, you'll find that out when it occurs. And you'll probably get better as you go along. Because the thing that I would try to impart you is to think about all the things that can possibly go wrong. And then, when they do go wrong, you've got someone there. And I mean, like George, George has been with the emergency medical people for twenty-plus years. A bee sting, lightning, snake bite, spider bite, just an allergy, all these things that happen. When you get that many people together, it's more than likely you'll have one emergency at least during your four days. And our cut, whatever it might be, a burn. So, if there's somebody there that can manage those kinds of things, yeah.
So, on May 22nd will be the meeting that decides if we can get a special, what's it called, a special use permit?
Well, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna deal with completely the attorney for the town. We'll talk about how we wanna manage that, whether we do or don't.
No, we now we got sufficient information about it. I wasn't aware, just conceptually. We'll have to classify it, and then we'll determine what, if anything, needs to be done at this level. But in the meantime, like I say, if you follow what you're gonna get in terms of the format and the proposal of the law, that'll give you a good template as to where we're going. And even if there's gonna be modifications, the supervisor, I don't think they're gonna be substantial. And you'll have a substantial, you'll have a definite head start getting the information yet, provided you get it for sale.
Will the issuing of a special use permit be based on how well we can comply with?
No. That's gonna be dealing with the zoning issue. It's farming today, it's not for a festival today. And so, now, do we need to change that or not? I don't know for the code, and that's where our attorney will lead us through that. We may not require them. But that's for us, not for you, so to speak, to worry about. But we will need a site plan, that's part of the application, I do believe. You spell it all out so that we see it all, and we can see that in advance.
And the site plan needs to be professionally done, or it can be, meaning, can I make the site plan?
Yeah, it's not, there's no engineering requirement. There's more issues raised by the site plan, they may result in some kind of certification.
I mean, we would quite, for example, you had your food prep next to your toilets, portable toilets, we said, "No, I don't think it's a good idea, why don't you put 'em the other acre over there?" That's all it is. And the distance between tents from privacy and fire.
You'll have to know that's a control, right? With this, you got four hundred people running around, putting stuff up, you know. Definitely. We just wanna make sure it's managed properly in all of these areas, that we could be liable for something that, I wanna at least give you the authorization to do this.
And as you see, part of the application requires you to submit comments, or reports, or approvals from the fire department, or police department, et cetera. I don't know what they're gonna want, in a way, of course, they take police protection. I think you indicated, they had no objection to you having a private force, private security. And I'm sure they wouldn't, but I'm sure they're gonna wanna know that you got adequate, whatever that plan is gonna be. I don't mean to keep going back to that local law, but that'll give you a outline, which, again, will answer most of your questions, you see.
And will I have another forum, or it's just I send it in and then?
No, I think if you get all the information in, and we're gonna review it, and we'll say okay, or no, not okay, based on what we're, go back for review.
Gotcha.
And the timing is fine, if you think about it. Because again, we're picking up on the 23rd, you can start tonight addressing some of those issues, but it sounds like you've got some of them addressed already. So, I don't think the timing will be a problem, it's a question of, you know, your preparation.
If I do my part, is it possible that on the 23rd I can get approval?
No, I doubt it. Sometime after that, but we've, yeah, we're too tight.
So, by what time, I mean, what would the timeframe be like after the 23rd? What needs to happen after?
I'll tell you, because this is a meeting day.
It's gonna depend on when he gets to us.
Yeah, right. And also, we have a meeting on the 26th, and then in June, we would meet on the 6th, the 9th, 20th, and the 23rd. So, there's five meetings, almost three to four weeks before your festival. So, any one of those meetings, who may be able to conclude it, depending upon how complete the application was.
It depends on more time for you to get tickets. Which, now, make sure it makes some stuff.
Put it this way, you get it to us, we'll try to do it as soon as we can.
Yeah, I don't think.
But I don't think we can promise at this point, when it is. I understand. And what's your latest cutoff for?
Emotional pressure.
Yeah, that, where you?
I mean, I wanted, originally, I envisioned, you know, a lot of times I envisioned the end of May, but obviously, that's not realistic right now.
If you get all your stuff together, it's like the?
Yeah, it's possible.
You get all the stuff together, the more you get done, the faster it's gonna happen.
Of course, as you'll see in the local law, it requires the site plan. So, if you can get that site plan done between now and the 23rd, even though we may not act on it on the 23rd, it'll be ready, your application can be fairly quickly completed. And the board won't be dilatory in any way in processing it. Because right away, you'll know if there's any efficiency, and if there's anything else you want, I assume communication will be done immediately, requesting you either come in or submit whatever the information may be.
I'm gonna be out of the country a little bit in June.
We go with you?
We have no control over that.
Absolutely. I'll carry your bags, I need a break.
I can send someone in my stead, yeah.
As a proportion, you may wanna set that up, just in case.
You got a lot of stuff to do.
Oh, yeah. Story of my life.
Well, I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And I hope we haven't been too parental in our approach to this thing, but I'll tell you, it is a very, very serious thing, that when you get that many people, and you're responsible for their well-being for that four days. If you start thinking about that, then you're gonna do a better job. And we'll help as best we can with the permit and other kind of things.
Great, thank you.
Okay? Thank you for coming?
Yep, thank you for having me.
At the end of that point, think about what's right for, send in a cornfield, or hay field, with ticks and mosquitoes, maybe wanna spend, wipe that stuff for you, back to the road, you know what I can imagine, ticks are.
I gotta take a couple of years.
Get them all in the cake, or cut hay field. And mosquitoes, a lot might be.
But what do you need to do with now? Say, fix up forever, back then?
I do have one question, David. David, I do have one question, and that is, a lot of people say, "Oh, I wanna bring my dog," or something like that. Okay, thank you.
Insurance company told me.
Right, okay, because maybe you can't live without your dog, and they come in to bite somebody or something.
I was sad, she told me I was sad, but she said, "It's gonna be very hard to get it happening."
Okay.
Saying my dogs really safe, they bring it to mission.
You got it. Okay. The next item on the agenda is, discussed and approved request by B.C. Stod to use Pumpkin Swamp Road for a filming project. Jack, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, you just go right through those doors.
Thanks.
Oh, I guess so.
Yeah, help with coordination, you know, complete, et cetera, et cetera. Is he gonna come in tomorrow and get it for us?
She's gonna give me a call in the morning, just to see what buzz hit me.
Because if you think about it, we said you proposed, but you're basically, for there, we did review it, there may be some minor changes, but the meat is in there. It's gonna tell him, but he needs to do. He's got time to start on it, he doesn't have already.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, again, is item three. Okay? You can see in your packet that Priscilla got a letter for Bridget Stod. And basically, this is for A&amp;E Network, they want, they're interested in filming a lonely, empty road for a couple of hours, either at dawn or sunset. We will consider Route 25, also known as Pumpkin Swamp Road for this.
Wait, it's about a lonely road?
And we told, when I talked to Bridget, or Bridget, B.C. Stod, I told her that May 8th was not possible. And so, she sent to us, we have insurance certificate, liability, we also need, Priscilla, did she give us the holiness timeless? This is it, that's all you got? And we still need that, and I told her about, we needed that other form, where a letter. What does that look like, Dennis? This, the holiness?
Actual agreement, you sign a two-page, you know.
Do we have that?
I have that.
Okay. We need to, we need to thanks that, too, or I guess.
Also, this certificate of insurance means nothing to me. I don't even work for insurance. I'm in the whole loyal gas company. I know you're wrong, I think they probably did the best they can, but they gotta understand. Obviously, you're gonna have that in bed, whatever the liability purposes, you gotta coordinate with the fire department, I'm sorry, the police department, they have to close the road off, I assume, for a second.
This looks like a policy that they have, a blanket policy, because it goes back to July 27th of last year.
Right, see, I can't tell.
A general liability commercial. And it says certificate holder, town of Goshen, okay. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Stuff like that?
Okay, so we need that, and that other document signed.
And think about, Priscilla, it's not that the assembly law was necessarily applying to this, it's the same type of information. We don't necessarily need a site plan, we need an explanation, where, when, how much, what section, police department, you know, things of that nature.
Well, they did, we asked her to deal with the police, and the police were supposed to have a document for us tonight, with the added force and the dollars and all that kinda stuff, we don't have that.
They, I'll talk with them today. They will be able to get that to us, until they get more information into how many sleep beds will be needed and the hours.
Well, that's, that's why, you know, Ms. Stod needs to be talked, she was talked to, I think it's from her perspective, when she called me back, said, "Yep, I've talked about there, you should be getting a letter from the police department saying, here's what we agreed to," or whatever, so.
She's the contact person?
She's the contact person.
I just, I don't know the kind of proportion, but they're talking about two hours of sunrise, something like that, on a lonely road, and I'm just saying, in respect to you.
Three, but.
Well, they just said, "Any, a lonely road, so if there's another road," I understand, but I'm just talking, this is not like a three-day event. It's no, it's two hours of filming.
Potentially, because it's on a public tour, it'd be more dangerous than a three-day event on a private property. That may be what I was concerned.
Yeah, all I'm just saying is I don't wanna keep everything.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sure.
Okay, all right.
But you know, I mean, if they're looking for a lonely road, and I was thinking of another road, it's dead-ended.
Yeah.
And, well, I was thinking, well, I was thinking of, if you want a desolate one, where there's nothing there, I guess they're looking for it, they just, Indiana Road, you know, something like that.
Yeah, see, again, because I'm sure there's some law involved, knows what they're actually looking for, I'm sure they have a pretty conceived idea. They probably scattered locations.
Two hours on a lonely road at sunset and sunrise.
You're gonna use my driveway.
Well, okay.
It does, yeah.
Well, I have a boat on my driveway.
No, you know what I'm saying, I just don't know. And I'm sure they have definite ideas as well.
Well, I know the meetings, I know she's talked to Sarah about it. I mean, I asked her if we'll find out what's required. And it could be either nothing, or two hours, or do it with a.
I just don't wanna blow this topic.
No, no, so, and what we've not heard back is, you know, so I think on Thursday night, Priscilla, if we can get all that information to us, then we can make a decision, one way or another.
One other point, Dennis, I might be reading this wrong, but I have this baffled me, it says here that the certificate holder, which is down in Goshen, is an official insurer that solely respects the immature use and occupancy in front of subpoenas.
That, that, that.
We're near downtown.
No, that's what I'm saying, I think they've probably made an effort and.
Yeah, that needs to be changed.
Yeah, agreed.
So, when you're talking to Priscilla, don't you change that as well?
Just out of curiosity, other than the contact by mail, would this, anybody come into that at all?
No. No. It's all by either email or telephone.
I'm just curious, legally, open court road is a county road, to the town of Goshen, and I mean, saying by the county, they don't have to be notified, is that?
Well, absolutely, they.
Saying the county don't have to be notified?
Coordinate with them also, yeah.
See, that's what I was wanting, you know, and I mentioned this, too, or on the phone, what about another road? And there are other roads that are town roads, that are lonely and desolate.
I think at three o'clock in the morning, or six in the morning.
Okay. So, we will do that on the 3rd. Okay, the next point is, we need a motion to, actually, we've already done this per the instructions of our attorney for the town. Evidently, one of our police officers arrested a person with a consignment of narcotics in the car, and was seized, the car was, then the DEA got involved in it, the car was sold, and some of that money is gonna come back to the town to be used for our drug enforcement program, okay? Now, it has to go into a non-interest-bearing special account for accountability. So, we're working with the budget officer, and he was requested to do this by the DEA. So, he has set up the account so we can receive the funds, okay? But we need approval from this board to allow him to create that non-interest-bearing checking account. So, would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
The authorization should go to the supervisor, or some designated board member, and the budget officer.
Okay, so the budget officer with the authority of the supervisor?
Or be the deputy, I don't know.
Okay.
Or be a plaintiff, you know.
Would someone like to make a motion? Is there a second?
Do we know what we're actually talking about?
About fifteen thousand?
Oh, they'll open the checking, you can't.
I think it was a femur.
Hundred and fifty dollars, I'm like, what are you waiting? Am I a drunk car with that? It can only be used for police enforcement.
Two are gonna use it.
Right, right.
It was a small amount of drugs.
There are. Okay, here's the motion, here's the motion. Someone ought to make a motion to authorize the supervisor and the budget officers open a non-interest-bearing checking account to receive funds from the DEA. Any discussion? All fakers say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I hope the check is in the mail.
Well.
Maybe here, okay. Okay, Dennis, I wonder if you could talk to us about this resolution regarding the stipulation for ADC Orange Inc.
If you remember, we discussed this at a prior meeting, but just to summarize, ADC Orange Inc. is the project colloquially known as Maplewood, out on Craigville, and that pursuant to a stipulation of settlement in regards litigation in front against the town. They are presently proceeding in front of the planning board with an application for a project of some size out there. The unit, that's not important, just the fact is, they have an application for the planning board, and that, per the stipulation, they were to have obtained an approval for their project on or before June 11th, 2011. Or alternatively, at that time, they could determine if they felt that the town was in any way dilatory, or obstructionist, or unfair, if you will, to their application, or the approval process. They could re-instigate a litigation against the town of Goshen. Now, what's happened is, they have been before the planning board, there's issues, which are, any application, environmental and otherwise, but it's not a problem, per se, and it's going through the normal process, but they're not gonna complete it by June 11th. So, in order to comply with the court stipulation, we have to sign an amended stipulation of that court agreement, extending the time period to another year, commencing June 11th of this year, to effectively June 10 midnight of 2012, in the hopes that they will complete whatever they're doing. And that could be a withdrawal, a modification, a change, whatever the case may be, or an approval. And that's basically the substance.
Does the extension, let them, if you give them, do they have any extension on the application?
I don't think so, because I think where they are, it's a site plan application, and there's subdivision issues, but I think where they are now is they're beyond the scoping session, I believe, and they're into the preparation of the environmental impact statements.
So, if we extend this for another year, and let's say their process runs out in three or four months, they're gonna have, they're gonna come back to us, and ask us to extend, what, their application?
Well, we can't do that, though, we have no authority to do that. Just so you're aware.
I don't wanna make it clear, that's not part of the litigation.
No, no.
The settlement, that we do that, too.
What this goes to is, with any litigant, when they brought the litigation, they were concerned if it was to be settled, without going to court, that the town might possibly throw roadblocks in their way, be dilatory in the process of their application, so they wanted some timeline protection, that by a certain date, they would either have or not have approval, or if they felt that they were being unfairly processed, if you will, they could reinstitute the litigation. And that was, again, the target date was June 11th of this year, they're not gonna make it that time.
Would someone like to make a motion in regard to this resolution?
Oh, wait, a second.
And just for clarification, the resolution is authorizing the supervisor to sign any old documents to effectuate that extension of the stipulation to another one year period.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, okay.
If, in fact, it's not extended, because they can't obtain, it's legally impossible to obtain an approval by June 11th of this year, then the litigation would be revised. That's the bottom line. And they have no alternative, we can back and forth against them.
But if they can't get the approval, or they drink their feed, or whatever happens, and the year, they have a whole year in which to bring the litigation back to us, for no fault of ours.
Well, combination of issues there, if they make the application, and we're processing it, they have no basis to reinstitute the litigation. It's only if we refuse to process it in the normal course, and that's what we're doing at the present time, I just said, I'm sure you folks know, from your days in planning board, the EIS is taking an inordinate amount of time to prepare and process, so it's ministerial, it's not substantive.
Okay, all right, okay. Madam Court, we have a roll call, both please.
Councilwoman Cantorina?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Capella?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newmaw?
Aye.
Supervisor Bozzi?
Aye. Motion carries.
Can I have the movement for a second, if I made it?
Ken and George.
Okay.
Okay, right. Dennis, I wonder if you could go through the next one, which is the, well, I take it back, item seven. I got a letter from Dennis Lindsay, and he's on vacation now, so I couldn't follow up on it, but, "The Stonehead Well, backup well, it's got bacterial contamination in it, and I need to talk, I get this for information for the board. There are several things that can be done, but one is to corinate the well before it turns in service. Of course, another one is to dig another well, or another one is fill something else, and I need to hear all those something else's from Dennis Lindsay."
Right, I know, I don't have.
So, anyway, and probably at our next work session, we'll bring that back up. Okay, now, Dennis, the next one is?
As the board knows, we, in regards to decision by Judge Ritter in the Altery Land and Lake Taxation, or I matter, we have filed a notice of appeal to the Second Department of Fella Division, State of New York. And in filing the appeal doesn't mean you're necessarily gonna pursue or prosecute it. So, what happens now is that you have before your resolution, with respect to that litigation, indicating that we wish the appeal to be perfected, and to move forward, and have it prosecuted by our special counsel, Hacker and Murphy, who handle trial work. They also will be handling the appeal, and as you see, attached to that is their proposal, indicating the record on appeal is gonna cost approximately fifteen thousand dollars. That's the, all the transcript testimony of all the witnesses, the actual trial, plus all the exhibits, which, as you know, consisted of probably five or six thousand pages. And then the attorney's fees, the prosecution, are estimated to be in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars. So, what you're approving tonight is the authorization to spend upwards of forty-five thousand dollars to prosecute the appeal, and hire or retain Hacker and Murphy to do so.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution? There's a second?
I'll second.
So, Luke's second, then. Any discussions?
Yeah, this could be anywhere along the way, this is what we're looking at, is max scenario, but we could, it could be settled, or decided, or.
Or it could be less.
Anywhere along the way, so, okay.
In timeline, you're probably, what is this, this is May of 2011, arguably, it'll probably come up, unless it's expedited, probably sometime in 2012. And then, it becomes a question of how long the time, if that division will take to make a decision.
Well, there are a couple of issues, not only appealing to one decision, but a number of issues that, in this appeal, if we are successful, will be catastrophic, reduce the liability that they were talking about. So, in those early years.
Yeah, the board knows that there were motions to knock out two or three years, actually three years, of prior taxation issues or contests, and then the overall assessments of parcels over the ten-year period. So, any variation in there could be a substantial change in the potential escrow and refunds and or taxes.
Good, so, all right, any other discussion? Madam Court, we have a roll call, both please.
Councilwoman Cantorina?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Capella?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newmaw?
Aye.
Supervisor Bozzi?
Aye. Motion carries, that's a good one. Thank you. Okay. Just as an item of interest, the town board is invited to attend the Memorial Day Parade at eleven o'clock on Monday, Memorial, Monday, May 30th, at here in Goshen. And as you see attached there? at 11 o'clock on Monday, May 30th, at Erie Goshen, and as you can see attached, there's a BFW who's trying to coordinate this. We've got to line up the parade on Erie Street between 10 and 10:30 in the morning, and it says the parade will step off sharply at 11. So, I guess, we've got RSP by May 18th, so if you think you're gonna be able to attend, let me know, and then we'll send a message over.
I'll be there, I'll be there.
Maybe? Okay. Is that a week now?
I was just gonna say, that was a week, even though it was a week, aye, you just said it. You know, I was gonna say that. I know. No, I felt, I had to be professional.
All right, okay. How about you, Louis?
I would, I don't know.
Okay. So, anyway, so far, we have Ken, Phil, and myself, and then we'll...
Should we have your hot dog?
Okay.
Take me the roll.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else for the general session? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion, and we go to executive session with the intent not to return, someone, oh, sorry, to review the, no, that's okay, to review the current status of the village-town sewer dispute arbitration, to discuss potential sewer rate changes on Hamiltonian Park and Arcade, and sewer districts, to discuss new sewer IMA proposal and future IMA negotiations, and discuss proposed tax surgery settlements for the following properties, Newport One, Manolka Inc., Benchmark Inc., GAN Properties, Presbyterian Church, and Jewish Loop Events.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All payers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Were there any other ones on there, or is that...
No, that's it.
That's it, okay, very good. Folks, thank you very much for coming.